Hey, that was great. Nice call to order on that.
Of course. I'm always ready.
I like it, Kristin. All right, so we're back live. And I think everybody in the room is here, so thank you.
That's right, everybody in the room is in the room.
Everybody. That's good, that's good. All right. I guess I might just open it up to the board and ask if they have any questions before we move forward with talking about the LWRP policies and going through them sort of one by one.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will there be outdoor seating in the restaurant that overlooks the canal?
Yeah, we'd like to. There, you know, that sketch that we had had a back deck on it.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if we're gonna do a restaurant and you're in this area, you get a few days a year that's awesome to be outside.
Yes.
We like to go to Shane, but we, I don't look like we do. We like to go to Shane Place and, of course, it adds, you wanna sit outside and...
Label Simon.
Absolutely. We'll do it.
I don't have a question or a comment, and I just wanted to thank whoever put together these comparisons with the images and the sizes and the, it's really very helpful.
Yep. Well, without further ado, let's talk a little bit about the policy document. So our task at hand is to go through the LWRP for consistency. The LWRP is predominantly a group of different policies, but it's also a framework that includes planning principles and design guidelines that can be found in Sections 4 and 5. If anybody online wants to follow along with the LWRP, it can be found on the Village website under Forms, and then I think Documents, and it's embedded in there. It's about 150 some odd pages to give you a sense as to the depth by which residents put into thinking about what was appropriate along the canal. So just a couple of quick comments I wanted to read. So the LWRP policies, this is Section 3, and just to note, "For the town and village of Pittsburgh, the policies contained in Section 3 should also be considered in conjunction with proposed land and water uses described and mapped out in Section 4, as well as the planning principles and design guidelines found in Sections 4 and 5." I mention that because in addition to those policies, there's also design guidelines that should be considered in the context of these policies. We know from the report from TY Lin that expressed, this is on the first few pages of the policy packet, they had referenced at the end specifically the last LWRP relative to the prior application and submission, that it was predominantly Policies Number 1, 11, and 12 that we had determined to be inconsistent last time, that their weight alone were, was greater in its inconsistency than the other policies were, that were found to be consistent or not applicable. We will today also go through each of those policies, even though they were consistent or not applicable. So with that in mind, I just wanted to read and start on Policy 1, perhaps the most, the one that carried the most weight along with policy number, I think it was 11 and 13.
Excuse me, can I just have a question? Are you intending to deliberate, or are you just, it's a question and answer for the applicant to find out what they're thinking about these, or?
Yeah, so...
What's, where we're going here?
That's great, that's a great question. My initial thought was to talk about it here as members of the board with the idea of moving towards enough deliberation such that we could make a determination of consistency or inconsistency. If questions through that conversation may arise, the applicant is welcome to stay seated here before us, or, you know, step back in the other chairs. It's really up to you, but welcome either.
If you're gonna do that, may I suggest that you consider closing the public hearing and the public comment period if you're going to actually start deliberations.
That's great. Really appreciate it.
Here is Stacy Ma.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Do you just wanna pass them along? Yeah, let me just pass them along. Were these all the same, Kristin?
Yeah, that's one.
Kristin, were these all the same?
Yeah, it's one copy.
Okay. So this is the submission that we had spoke of earlier by Mr. Pierce.
Correct.
And Christopher Peter, if you want a copy.
We have one.
Okay. So I just might make a quick mention of this, and then we can close the public hearing unless there's additional comment. And Mr. Pierce, we appreciate your additional work. If I'm, if my brevity in going through this skips anything, my apologies. So specifically, he references the side view of Building 1 along the Monroe Ave corridor, referencing the more square nature of the buildings to the right. That would be the east elevation. This I know to members of the public, you can't see this now, but simply referencing, please see following examples of current local residential developments on Genesee River, Erie Canal. Follow-up questions aboard? Let's just see. He provides some images of development on South Clinton Ave and the Genesee River. Some of the sizing and scaling, and then a perfor development with an aerial view as There's a question about incorporating more architectural treatments from Village Main Street and Monroe Ave into Buildings 1 and 2. I think we'll talk a little bit more on that as well. And then additional building heights and widths on the elevation for clear understanding and comparison. Okay. So this was just simply referencing, trying to look at the buildings relative to other existing buildings like that on the Flower Mill, and I think some of the submissions that you provided earlier that Stacy made mention of do that reasonably well. So thank you, Mr. Pierce, and we'll certainly take this into consideration. Is there anything, any other comments, Q and A from the public?
There is none.
Well, all things considered, I think it's time to close the public hearing and the public comment period. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and close the public comment period.
Okay. Call. Member Happen?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Yes.
Chair Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other procedural matters I should think of before we get right into it?
You're doing well, thank you.
All right. Policy 1. So I'm gonna read Policy 1 for those members of the public on, and also to set our perspective on what this conversation will be about. Keep in mind, these policies are quite lengthy, so I'll try not to read through all the matter. Hopefully, we've all done that in advance. Policy 1. Foster a pattern of development in the town and village of Pittsburgh that enhances community character, preserves open space, makes efficient use of infrastructure, makes beneficial use of a waterfront location, and minimizes adverse effects of development. In Policy 1.1 specifically, preservation of community character. The property owners in the town and village of Pittsburgh Planning Boards have made significant efforts towards identifying and preserving existing landmarks and maintaining the charming residential character that defines a community. Therefore, it is important that historical scale and patterns of development be recognized and preserved. Now, I'm skipping ahead a little bit to some other matters, or some other quotes that I'm pulling out. And I might ask, I'm sorry to interrupt this, but I might ask to the applicant, in this particular phase of the discussion, if we have questions, we'll bring them forward, otherwise it'll just be among the board. Okay? And you're welcome to stay seated here or else... Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Okay. So no action will be undertaken within the LWRP foundry as described in Section 1, which detracts from the historic character of the community. In implementing this policy, it is recognized that change will occur in the waterfront area, but that such change should contribute to and not detract from the rich fabric of its historic character that is so important to the economy, vitality, and sense of place in the Pittsburgh community. Skipping further, new construction or alterations will be done in accordance with the existing historical patterns of the area. Such patterns include buildings which address the public realm at street level, front doors on front walks, et cetera, use of building materials such as brick, wood, wood siding, which are consistent with the character of the area. New construction of buildings and building alterations should be sited in such a way that fronts the buildings where appropriate they address the public realm which exists along the street and canal. Doors should face the street and where appropriate the canal path. Parking lots and other entrances, storage, maintenance, loading, and refuse should be screened appropriately. The visual impact of parking near the canal should be minimized. The siting of new construction or building alterations should reflect and reinforce existing building line and be compatible with existing mass and height. New buildings should not compete with or destroy the existing street line and skyline, but should enhance the overall character. They should be respectful, the buildings in size and scale, should be respectful of views to and from the canal, existing natural features, and where feasible, retain the integrity of the site's character. Excuse me. Skipping ahead, overall, the design of new construction, as well as infill construction or alterations, should enhance the character of the community, canal, and contribute to, not detract from, a unified and memorable Pittsburgh identity. Motor vehicle access, with the exception of emergency vehicles, should be prohibited on the canal towpath. Let's skip that for a second, not sure why I highlighted it. Major new development, so there's in fact a section in 1.1 dedicated specific to major new development, which I think this would be considered. Open space, courtyards, and landscape pathways within any new development should be encouraged to provide transitional areas between public and private spaces. Major new development should incorporate logical development patterns, which are typical of the Village vernacular. Larger structures should be broken up into smaller, more pedestrian scaled structures, which relate better to the existing streetscape. An interesting facade and window scheme will stimulate pedestrian interest. Overall, the design of parking lots should provide for the safe and efficient movement of both pedestrians and vehicles. That's Policy 1.1. The task that you had in front of you is not easy, and we respect that and certainly appreciate this conversation. So I guess I'll open it up specific to Policy 1.1.
So are we, just so I understand, are we now deliberating the points, the questions?
Yes.
Or are we, we are?
I think now is the right time to begin the deliberations of these questions and whether or not we feel as a board we can come to an agreement as to the consistency or inconsistency of each policy. I think we're at that point.
Okay. So actually, something is said tonight that kind of helped me focus my thoughts, and first of all, the, all of the visual presentations was great, really helpful. As you said, a lot of those buildings no longer exist, but in Pittsburgh, they exist. And you did mention, it was mentioned, that Shane Place is certainly in light of the other illustrations that we've seen along the canal, is atypical. So number one, it still exists, where others don't, and it's atypical. So it's atypical of some of the other canal scenes, but it is Pittsburgh, and that is what defines Pittsburgh Village, New York. So kind of that is my North Star. And, you know, we have, you know, through dialogue and conversation and compromise, a lot has been accomplished. But I feel that some of the variation that these principals talk about, stylistic variation, that should reflect the original functionality of business of the buildings. I don't, I don't see that in some of these drawings. I mean, there are barns and references to barns, I think that's great. But all in all, I think the emphasis has been more on Main Street. And again, not only do we have kind of competing documents in the village, but we have independent boards. I see an emphasis on capturing Main Street. I think that's great for part of it, but where is the, that stylistic variation, building size, that would typify Shane Place? So that's something that I'm thinking about now.
Any other comments at this time?
I think they have a really hard job of, Chris. It's like there's two, there are two competing things. Like if you were to, if someone took all the old buildings and said to an architect, "Just convert these into apartments," I don't think they would look like what a new constructed building looks like. So we have this sort of vision of what it used to look like, or what was there historically, and a vision of something that needs to move on into the future. And we also have a townscape, and we have a canal scape, you know, warehouses and all that. I just think it's, I see them as trying to do their best to serve both masters, and I think it's, I mean, I'm, I think what they've done over the last, you know, however many years this has been going on, I think they've done a really good job of making those changes. I, the thing that strikes me that doesn't work for me are the balconies. They just don't seem to fit with the village at all, but I know it's important for people that need outdoor space when they're basically living in apartment buildings. So there are just comments, I don't know where you put that in the whole... Well, I agree. Not easy, competing documents, I mean, seemingly competing documents, but our focus is the, is the LWRP, and that's the local waterfront. I think citations to Main Street have their place. I think that's great. I still look at a lot of buildings. Actually, I think 7 is now the most interesting one. You know, because it does show, because it's not in thirds for one, and of course, the smaller buildings, you know, wouldn't make much sense in a third, but the other ones are in thirds. And so that's, that to me is still a, a kind, a lack of variation, it still has stylistic continuity that I see that doesn't reflect. The Call Tower, the Flower Mill, the lower buildings on Shane Place, and I think this is, you know, something that I think I've said now for a couple LWRP consistency reviews. And so like I said, that is something that guides my thoughts and...
At one point, oh, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
No, please.
Well, I think, I think we have to kind of look beyond Shane Place. I think it's an important part of this village, but this is also, we're developing a brand new residential community on a location that hasn't been developed in decades. And this is a project of historic portions in this, in this, in this village. And I think if you look historically at other projects, the initial reaction will have to be in line with how, you know, you're exactly mimicking something else in the village. The library doesn't, you know, the Del Monte doesn't, but now, 10 years later, these, those buildings are beautifully incorporated into the village, and they add a whole bunch of character to our village. And I think it's hard to look at these just drawings and see that they're historic, because they're not, they're brand new. But over time, they're going to get incorporated into the historic and give, you know, aspect of our village and give our village a lot of character. When you're coming across that bridge into the village, this is a nice view, I think, personally, of, this is a great entrance to the, to the village, I think. And I think, I think we have to keep in mind, this is not historic development, this is, looks like it could be, and in 20 years, it might be, but it's, I think the rendering of these pictures is as close as you're gonna get, and it's not gonna be perfect, but I think we're... I think it's very close.
Thank you. One of the questions that I have is often, "Does it detract from or add to the historical character of the village?" And I'll bring this back to comments that we had in our design discussions in November and December, which were about size and scale. So I first, I guess, want to recognize, Katie, I appreciate what you have to say. I think where we are relative to new buildings in a historic context and feel, and Susan, your comments about Building 7, we are so much closer to moving this forward, I think, than we've ever been. I do think that there are elements of it, specific to size and scale, that create a unique identity in and of itself, that doesn't necessarily blend in with the historical character of the residential communities as much as perhaps I'd like, and it may just simply be size and scale, not necessarily design style, right? And so I'll, this is not a perfect comment, but I'll take Orchard Park as an example. You think of it as a football field, not necess, I don't know what the village looks like per se, I identify Orchard Park as where the football field is, right? There are other communities that probably have things like that. I don't think that is what we're looking at here today, but there is some of that element that as you come across, and again, this is something I had referenced back in last year, that as you're coming across on a boat, for example, from the canal going, you know, west to east, as you come into the village, it's the beginning of Building 7. And it will take some time, all the way from the State Street Bridge to the, or the Main Street Bridge to the State Street Bridge, right? To go from the beginning of Building 7 all the way to the end of Building 1. And you get this identity or this, this character that is defined by that experience that is rather prolonged. And then you have a little bit of gap as you come around the river and you come upon Shane Place, and you have a very unique, different Village vernacular, more atypical development. And what happens in that environment, I think, is you can sometimes get these two different identities, right? Conversely, and again, I'm not suggesting that the development looked like the residential neighborhoods on Monroe and Sutherland, right? Clearly, the, where we are today would suggest that's probably unlikely to see a Sutherland style of development along the railroad tracks there. But that bifurcated sort of perspective, right, between significant sizing and scaling of apartment complexes relative to the smaller residential communities and neighborhoods of Monroe and Sutherland, bring to question, how big can we do this without creating too much of a difference that it creates its own identity? Right? And, and that's what I want to make sure that we ponder as we determine consistency with regards to Policy 1.1. I recognize as well, Stacy, your comments on balconies, they are practically unknown, but if we were to take some old industrial buildings and convert them to apartments, typically speaking, the reuse, you know, recycling, repurposing, would generally move forward with the idea of adding amenities specifically to maintain that building, right? So here, while we're not maintaining an old building, the idea of incorporating old style or a historical style with elements like balconies, while they may not be prevalent, it's certainly possible. There may be some opportunity to engage more of a front walkway, you know, down to the canal that we had talked about, rather than just an enclosed porch. I think that there could be some consideration, as Susan said, with regards to Building 7. How might that look at Building 2 or, you know? But again, I don't necessarily think it's, the design for me, although I like some elements of different buildings more than others, I think it's more the scale and the unique identity that it creates in and of itself that has me concerned. There is also, and again, this is concern relative to the LWRP as it was written in 2004 and '05, and our task is to uphold that document, right? Or determine consistency relative to that document. I wanted to just mention as well, so they talk a little bit about charming residential character and a historical scale and patterns of development. You know, certainly, that document, I don't think we could look at this and suggest that it is of the same historic scale and the same pattern of development, but I also want to be respectful to the fact that new development isn't. It's gonna have challenges to look like that, right? And site plan will have challenges to look like that. So different orientation of buildings, for example, may not be possible within the fire code or where streets are, right? There was a mention as well that the siting of new construction should reflect or reinforce the existing building line and be compatible with existing mass and height. So there is no existing building line, right? And to the mass and height comment, I'll just talk mass for a second. In the recently submitted documents, you had answered a question that I had last time, I think very well, which is, "How large is this development relative to what we're seeing on Main Street?" And I know it's not Main Street, but you had looked at Buildings 1, 2, and 3, and the answer was 1, 2, and 3 by themselves were from four corners to the florist. So if we take Buildings 4, 5, and 6, that would be that again, and then if we take Building 7, that would be roughly another 2/3-ish. So in essence, the development length, what we see on this horizontal elevation guide that was provided, is a series of buildings that it would extend 2 and 2/3 the distance from four corners to the florist. That's where, when I start thinking about its own identity, my concerns come in, right?
I mean, it is called Westport Crossing, so already on my mind, it's a different identity. You're not calling it Nobi, North Village, or Cincinnati, or whatever. So is it always going to have a separate name, so it'll always have a separate identity? So if you're talking about identity, then maybe somebody, you know, someone else...
So this is a great question, and I'll reflect back on, I think it was a November 15 public comment. At the beginning of our discussion, there was an application at the time that I don't think as well incorporated some of the LWRP standards, and we talked about the degree by which the architects in their new design had reviewed the significant 150 pages that was the LWRP, and the comment at the time is we hadn't received the document nor reviewed it at that time. And also in that same conversation was the question of, you know, what the building should look like in Shane Place or not, or the village, and how it should complement things. And there was a comment there, "We don't want to be known as, I think, just an extension of Pittsburgh Village, we want to be known as Westport Crossing." That is in quotes, not quotes, excuse me, air quotes for anybody who's, it's not a perfect comment, but there was...
Right. That captures the spirit.
Yep. So to your question that you sort of just naturally came upon, I don't know if you happened to watch the December 15 meeting, but that is a concern, right? That you create this unique, separate identity... That you create this unique, separate identity because of either just size and scale, or the plan itself in aggregate, right? And again, in looking at the document, our task is to evaluate it relative to this document. And it says, "Overall, the new design and infill, the character of the community and canal contribute to, not detract from, a unified and memorable Pittsburgh identity." Personally, I think I can overcome the unified and memorable identity from a sizing and scaling perspective, rather than having it, for example, replicate a Sutherland residential community character, or a Monroe Ave. community character. This size alone, by making it smaller, possibly, can allow me to think of it less as an individual identity than I do now. There was, ah, this was an interesting comment in, again, "An interesting facade and window scheme will stimulate pedestrian interest." This goes back to Susan, a comment that you had had, I think, in, again, November or December, where we were talking about the consistency or persistency of the windows at certain elevations. Everything on the second floor was exactly the same where the windows came across, the same on the first, and the same on the third. And again, I, I'm here to try to figure out how to move forward, right? I think we all are. And, and some of the elements of the LWRP, if we can accommodate, it allows, within that weighing station, us to think about how we take that next step.
There was a comment that there are 17 or 19 window variations.
Right, that's correct.
In terms of, could somebody just--
Chris, can you--
Yeah, what we were talking about was, you know, there's single windows, there's single windows with mullions on the top, there's windows with mullions on the top and the bottom, there's different sills, there's different, you know, transoms, so there's different combinations of all of these windows, right?
Is it the basic, but do you start out with the same basic window size?
Not probably everywhere, but in general, I think there's a fair amount of consistency about the window size, but--
So, so the basic size, and sometimes it's--
Sometimes they're still getting together, or, sometimes they may be taller or shorter, but not, we have a few that are much smaller, but there's a somewhat of a mid-range that's often used. But I think that's actually pretty consistent with historical styles in the village. I think, if you look at the canal commercial, or even if you look at residential styles in the village, I mean, it's a human-scaled element, right? That's really a part of, of a structure that's, these aren't like, big assembly-type spaces, you know, where you have these, like, it's not, we're not building churches or other kind of monumental structures. So I think, you know, the scale of the windows is not surprising, I think it's, you know, I think there's enough variation to meet the standard, and I think it's appropriate. I mean, they're subtle, variations are generally subtle, they're not huge.
Right.
From a--
No, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, from a building perspective, having different heights of various portions of these different buildings, is that prohibitive? Is it--
No, I'm doing that. Different silvers--
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't seem to alter the line of windows across the buildings.
Okay.
Chris, can you describe which one you're looking at now, when people are listening?
This is a sketch from CJS from December 15, 2021. Remember, we did this to show how we view the village, the actual, the windows are skewed, and we tried to skew the windows in a similar way. You know, this was a comment from the HPPB, which we tried to address, not only the buildings pushing and pulling, but again, the heights of the windows are varying.
And this is specific to the canal side facing of Building One?
Correct.
Yep.
I don't know which building that is.
Yeah.
It's slightly outdated, wrong, but it's, I think it is.
Yep. As you look forward through into Building Two, Three, Four, Five, we lose some of that. And even in the newly designed Seven, again, I, I like the, the vertical nature of, of that grouping of buildings on the, the left facade there, but the consistency of the windows and height and/or, you know, balconies gives sense to the idea that it's just one build, you know, one building. You know, it brings, what we're trying to break up with regards to the vertical facades comes back together--
No, I understand. I mean, we could certainly make additional adjustments to that. I mean, there's certain, there's something nice about having a low sill in your space, and you don't want the sills to get too high, but if it's a bedroom versus living room, obviously, then there's some discretion that you would use. And even so, even, even with living rooms, I mean, you can bring the sills down within 18 inches, and it's still totally fine, without it to go to, you know, tempered glass or other kinds of safety measures. So I mean, I'm sure there's adjustments like that that could be made without, you know, well, that could be made.
Yeah. And to that point too, I mean, within these buildings, it's all one floor, so when you go into the apartments, they're all the same--
That's right, yeah.
--floor, right? So that's your comment as to why the building height, or the window heights, generally are constant, because it's the standard height of the window within a residential unit--
Right. But, but to that point, I mean, you could have a window that's here, and a window that's there, and the built be totally appropriate, you know, you wouldn't feel like you're, you know, living in some place that's, you know, non-designed.
But Craig, wouldn't that look a little weird from the outside, if you had--
No, I think, I think if you do it at the breaks between the imaginary buildings that we're creating here, that, you know, if, if we're change from one material to another material, then we make that change, and that change either happens between someone's living room and their bedroom, or it happens between my unit and your unit, so there's no perceptual, which I think that could certainly be done, and to, you know, to the extent that, that would be something that this board requires, I'm confident we can do that.
With regards to the sort of historical nature of the structures, historically built, the canal side and villages built between like 1790 and 1930, and as a nice preservation of that architecture, we've got a lot of variations in wood buildings, right? What are the different facades that are across these buildings?
So we have--
Well, different--
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
We have, we have wood, we have brick, we have--
Metal.
Yep.
And we have all those as well, so we do have, you know, wood or fiber cement, it's painted, so the indistinguishable from wood really, you know, once it's painted, brick, metal, yeah.
And, yeah, for example, with the newly designed Building Seven versus some of the others, would that remain relatively constant between brook and, brick and wood, versus, say, Building Two being more metal?
So Building Two, I think, you know, the left-hand portion is essentially painted wood, and there's a small brick portion, then another piece that's also, I think, painted wood. Building Seven, at this scale, I can't remember exactly, but there's certainly, you know, two or three pieces there that are, are brick, and some others that are either metal and or wood.
Yeah.
I don't have to give you the exact--
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
So I think going back to the identity, if you're, if you're placing yourself on, say, the, the sand patch going down the, the canal, and you're moving along slowly, you're going to see different facades. It's not gonna look like seven buildings, and what it might look like many more than that, I'm not gonna do that, but, and with gazebos, right, and benches, and people milling around outside, and a clubhouse, which has an entirely different look than everything else I've seen. So I don't see that it creates its own identity. I see that it's, it has an identity, but I don't think it so far afield from the identity of the village, particularly because so many of the features of this, of these buildings incorporate the historic features of the buildings all we already have, and we enjoy looking at. So it's the same thing, you're gonna go, you're going down the canal on the sand patch, you're gonna see all these, these buildings, and then you do have a shift. Across the street, you've got the, the Department of Public Works, and then further on, you've got just trees, and that has its own identity. And then you've got Chain Place, which has got its own identity. And so I think you have this very nice, long stretch of Pittsburgh, which is kind of what we want, instead of what we have now, quite frankly, which is not very welcoming.
No, no doubt that, I mean, it's just leaps and bounds and improvement. I mean, what wouldn't be, really? So, I mean, so in, in that respect, you know, this is a, this is desirable. I think the question is, when it's, you just said, it creates its own identity. I guess the trees do as well, and so with Chain Place, I think, for me, the balance is being directed by the LWRP to kind of maintain an identity. So if this is creating a new one, how consistent is that with the instructions of the LWRP, which is to kind of maintain a, an identity that's established not just on Main Street, but along Chain Place?
Sure, I think the identity is variety, right?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
And so I think this, this does incorporate that into, because there, there is variety, and you're not, I think we're, I think we're very focused on the buildings, and how the buildings are going to look. And I think it's easy to do that, and then forget about how this is going to look whole scale when it's live, and the dynamic that all the landscaping will bring to it, and, you know, the, the life that will come to, you know, residential facility.
So, I'm, right, there, there should be, there should be great buildings along this stretch. I just think, great buildings, as the LWRP directs us, great buildings that, that reflect similar, similar variety to what is already on Chain Place.
Yeah. The LWRP document, in my mind, does suggest a homogeneity to development, that this development is incongruent. However, the LWRP also grants some flexibility, right? And again, it's this weighing station. And so to the extent that, as I look at this development, and think to myself, three, four, five, six buildings, maybe that's okay, in a development that is very incongruent with the existing residential character of the community. But as you start to get into Buildings Six and Seven in my mind, I feel like I'm starting to create too much of a, and I'll use your words here, brand-new residential community that is entirely what the LWRP is protecting against in the document. So while I don't necessarily disagree that there is a possibility of having a wonderful brand-new residential community in our village, our task as board members is to reflect on a 2004 and 2005 document that was written by and approved by the residents to protect those that are here now, to ensure against what it is that, in a way, you had commented on earlier, right? This new identity, a new residential community. So said another way, I think the LWRP is pretty clear across the aggregate document, that it basically wants small development housing that looks very similar to Sutherland and Monroe. That is not what we're looking to build, right? This is entirely and uniquely different, that as you scale up, right? You have to reflect on many of the design elements, architectural features, and all these other things, that hearken to and bring it and connect it to the village. But as you do that persistently across such a large tract of land, again, 70% impervious surface, you're also permitting something beyond what the LWRP is trying to get as well, which is more green space along the canal, right? So this is this very fine line between recognizing where we are, appreciating so much of what has been put into this property relative to the Monaco site in the past, respecting the community and the citizens with regards to where we've been, you know, over the last 10 years, but also knowing that our task at hand is to interpret the goals of the LWRP. And in my view, this as it is right now, goes farther than I could generally suggest is consistent with Policy 1.1.
Can I provide a comment?
Yes, sure.
Okay. So, just a couple things, you know, that I think might be worth thinking about. One, I think we've done a little bit of a disservice to ourselves by not more prominently featuring the clubhouse, because I think it will break this up into two very, you know, just discernible kind of pieces, right? So you're gonna have the piece on one side, the piece on the other side, because it's so much the foreground, that as you're going down the canal, if that's how you're visualizing this, you know, kind of neighborhood, that, you know, that's gonna provide a pretty strong visual break, and it's not gonna be just one contiguous row, even though that may or may not be okay. So I think you should think about that. And the other thing I would say is, you know, I don't want to offend anyone here, but the buildings in Chain Place are not exceptional buildings, right? They're not, they're not great, you know? No offense, anyway, I think it's a great place, right? But it's not because the buildings are great. It's the community character that you're talking about that is what's valuable. And I think, you know, when you have a quarter mile of Chain Place, you have a quarter mile of this, you need a certain amount of infrastructure to build community. If we build two buildings over here, nobody's gonna be walking along the canal, because you're only gonna walk like for 10 steps, and be like, oh, we're done, I guess, you know, go home now. So, so the walk that you take from Aladdin's down to Label Seven is the same walk as this, and it's not that long, but it's long enough. And if you make it shorter, it's not gonna make it better. It's gonna make it actually less of a walk, and less of a destination, and less of a community. I mean, even things like the balconies, they may not be historically correct, but everything we can do to promote either energy, or potential energy, or community, or activity, these are the things you need, like porches, you know? When you walk down a street in Pittsburgh, if there's no porch, it still is a porch, it still has the potential energy of someone being there, just like a doorway is more interesting, like when you walk down a street than not a doorway, not because there's someone pointing out all the time, but because there's someone that might come in or out. It's like, there's a story behind it, right? There's, you can look at it and say, oh, I wish I was sitting up there today. You don't do that if there's no balcony. You don't say, I wish I was, well, there's no place to, there's nothing, there's no narrative there, right? So we're trying to create a backdrop, we're not trying to like, do more than that. And I, I think, you know, the LWRP, I think, maybe they're not intending to use community as the word for character, but I think, I think you gotta put the emphasis on community, because that's, that's what's gonna make this place feel like it's part of Pittsburgh.
So personally, I, I don't object to, to the length of, that's your space, use, use your space. It has always been the variation in the shape of the buildings. So that's what I--
Okay.
Right. And you're right, Chain Place, it's, if we kind of value this part of the canal for, for being original, when a lot of the canal, along the canal, there are no original buildings, I mean, it works at all-- I mean, it works at all, you know, that's what, that's what we thought and that's what defines, defines Pittsburgh. So again, it's not the, it's not that stretch of land that can be put to great use. It is the, um, it is the, it is the size and I still see kind of blocks. But that's what I'm thinking about.
I think it's difficult because, you know, the more, as we talked about, the more variety you put into each piece, the more uniformity you create over the entire distance. If we made one of these buildings look like the DOT facility across the street, there'd be more variety.
Right.
And that would be good, but it wouldn't be a better public realm, it wouldn't be a better place to build community. So, you know, how do you make a distinction between? The most variety we could do would be to put the oil tanks back, because that would actually be the more, you know, I mean.
But there's a lot of area between, you know, there are a lot of buildings. Like we talked about, like make one like a big barn.
Yeah.
So we, we've had discussions like that, it doesn't have to be, you know.
We tried to do that for you, second building.
And I think that was a good comment and I think it's better for it. But when you walk down a street that's pleasant, uh, you know, I don't know, I can name communities that I like, but it doesn't matter, the, the, the relative sameness, I mean, go to the extreme. Go to like an Italian hill town and walk town street there. All the buildings are made of the same material, they're all the same, they're basically all the same. But it doesn't mean it's not nice, you know what I'm saying? So, so I don't know.
Like a series of brownstones, right?
Yeah, same thing, exactly right. You walked down a street in Park Slope or, you know, Upper West Side or something like that, there's a lot of repetition and a lot of continuity.
I know, but so now we're talking about Italy and the Upper West Side and I'm just trying to focus on Pittsburgh canal.
No, I understand, I understand. But, you know, again, making it like Shane Place doesn't necessarily make it better. And all those other canal communities that you see on the Erie Canal that were built at the same time, you know, were other versions of the same history, just like the oil tanks in Pittsburgh were another piece of that. So I don't know if trying to replicate Shane Place is really in our best interest. Not to say that that's easy to do and make it a part of the project anyway, but that's all another problem.
There's a difference, you're the architect, but there's a difference between something being replicated, I think, and something being contextual. And I think that is, that's where I would like to be.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we tried to create as much variation as is practical. So we have a lot of two-story facades along the canal with only three stories in the back, which you won't perceive at all in the same way. Now we've got these little mezzanines that pop up to a fourth story. We're going from, you know, two-story pieces that are no bigger than someone's house to four-story structures. We have a lot of variety. We don't have the variety that Shane Place has. We don't have, you know, a grain elevator and we don't have a one-story building. But, I don't know, I, I guess, we, we, well, we have one through the clubhouse, two stories on the canal side.
So I just wanted to make mention of a couple of things. So talking about design being compatible with the village as the document suggests it should, and these are just a few comments I'll bullet point out. Architectural historical design principles, you know, mass scale, design height with orientation, things like that. The project, as much as I like many elements of it, I do think it competes a little bit with the nature of the village. Again, a reference relative to size. So if these buildings were all, you know, one or two-story or even a couple, three stories and smaller in scale, all of a sudden, it, it has less of its own identity. And, and so the question again is, with our task before us, we have to think about mass and scale relative to the village itself. And my comment about buildings one through three being as big as from the Four Corners all the way to the Forest and then doing that again, one and two-thirds time, and that, this is the property, it will certainly be developed. But to the extent that the size and scale is identical to Main Street and then you're replicating that two and two-thirds times, not necessarily smaller residential homes or building structures, that's what's creating this sense of individualism. The New York State Office of Parks and Rec suggests that new construction be within ten percent of the scale of historical equivalents. These do tend to exceed that, though you've referenced length. I sincerely appreciate the length comment. It's the, the length and the depth and the persistency of it that suggests that, again, by itself, it's disproportionately large. But there's so many elements of this that you guys have worked hard to move towards that I'm excited about, quite honestly. I, I just can't find myself feeling like it's contextually appropriate. And again, this is very much different than any other residential area. And what we're trying to do in a way is create that canal-side, village, Main Street-type feel and then put, you know, residential units in it. And that effort to do both of those things with the residential units to the number that we're looking at is what creates again, a sort of a separate identity and feel. So I want to move on if I could to Policy 1.2. Ensure that the development makes beneficial use of the waterfront location. In general, I think it does.
Absolutely.
Right? Whether or not it's residential or walkways or canal front or docking, certainly none of those things exist today. Yeah, I, I do wish there could be a little bit more sort of green space canal side than is perhaps embedded in the document. Maybe that's based on the R5 code and where the, you know, the frontage needed to be. And again, those are, you know, flexibility points. Anybody else have comment on Policy 1.2? Policy 1.3, maintain and enhance natural areas, recreation and open, open space. Uh, so right now, it is in open space only because of the work that has been done before, but nobody's using it. Um, and, you know, certainly you have a right to develop. And so a natural area that exists today is one that won't be there tomorrow. But I think to the extent that you're trying to incorporate it and maintain it, I'm comfortable with that. Policy 1.4, improve canal corridor infrastructure. Well, there's nothing there now. And this talks about boater services such as fuel. I don't think we'll be doing that, but maybe electricity. I don't think there's any electricity or sewage pump outs being available to boaters, is that correct?
I don't remember what was in there. I, I, my answer's no.
Yeah, okay. But nonetheless, just the dock alone creates existing uses. Will there be a small boat launch at all or just simply?
Hand carry boats.
Hand carry boats, so.
Not a ramp. So like you can carry your kayak down to the water, right?
Okay, so there will be elements of that. And then, uh, improve canal corridor amenities. Um, again, there's nothing there now. I, I see no way to suggest that this project wouldn't be including amenities. Any other?
Did it say something about infrastructure?
Yeah, so let me read this one. This is Policy 1.4, thank you, John. Uh, boater services such as fuel, freshwater, electricity and sewage pump outs will be supported in areas where boating amenities are needed. Important canal corridor infrastructure elements include, but are not limited to, existing water and sewer services, solid waste disposal, transportation systems and parking. If some of those things, I think like sewer, for example, relative to the size of the community has more to do with cycling than it does with the LWRP. And so I suspect what was granted prior, many of these things, you know, in, in this instance, other than having, will you have electricity hookups or no at this time? No, okay, so this is just straight, you know, dock and small boat launch. Okay, um, any other comments on Policy 1? No, okay, moving on to Policy 2. Preserve historic resources of the coastal area. Well, there aren't any.
So for the Policy 2.
Yep, moving on to Policy 2. Policy 3, enhance visual quality and protect outstanding, outstanding scenic resources. Part of the document, the LWRP will aid the community's long-term commitment to the enhancement and protection of important scenic resources and open space programs. The visual quality of waterfront development is an important component of the character and waterfront communities. Water-dependent uses often include infrastructure changes to landscape, et cetera, et cetera. Major structures contribute to the scenic quality and should be preserved. Uh, there are many excellent examples of that. Talks about historic preservation. So one of the things that I, I, I read, when I read this and they talk about preservation and historical character, with regards to large new development, clearly, you're not trying to emulate as much as draw upon some of the shared visual characteristics. Um, and that is in a way, how you're trying to bridge between this development and the village such that it doesn't create its own unique identity. It's just kind of my take on that. There, let's see. It is not the intent of this policy to prohibit completely development of open lands, rather to manage that development and to conserve open lands as part of the development process.
Thirty percent.
Yeah. Want to expand on that?
So the, the green space is thirty percent, right?
Yeah, but again, that means within the code, the R5 code.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
And when the tanks were there, it was probably five percent of the space. So which way do you want it?
No, I was, I was gonna say, Susan, it is, you're right. It's, as we've read throughout the LWRP and we were cognizant of the LWRP doing the cycling, they don't quantify green space, they just reference it.
Right.
Which, okay, so we acknowledge that yes, green space has to be an important component of the project. So then what do we fall back on? Was the code requirement of twenty percent as the minimum, okay? And we're providing thirty percent, so.
Right. No, so, no, I, I didn't, in any way, but special, I mean, as a, you know, when we look at other applications, um, different scale, thirty percent, uh, this would be a good thing.
Okay. Now, let's see. Oh, that's why I skipped on that just a minute. All right, so we're on Policy 3, enhance visual quality, protect outstanding scenic resources, protect aesthetic values associated with recognized area of high scenic quality. And to me, in this instance, you know, I, Katie, I tend to agree that, you know, there's, there's something nice about having some persistency of design through that, you know, walkway or canal side. I mean, I, I do, and especially with the landscaping as it's identified and we'll talk more on the site plan, I, I think there's, to some degree, the, the homogeneity of just that parcel itself creates a sense of feel. My challenge is, of course, still, the bigger that sense of feel is, the more it's separate and unique and distinct from the village itself. But I certainly think it adds to the, you know, visual versus what is there now. Any other comments on Policy 3? These weren't the major ones. Policy, relative to the TYL comments on Policies 1 or 113. Policy 4, Point 2, preserve and restore natural protective features, really nothing there. Expend public funds for management and control of flooding or erosion. Certainly you'll do that as part of the development. Comply with the provisions of any municipal erosion plan. I don't believe there are any, though of course that'd be part of the engineering work. So we're moving on to 5. Protect and improve water resources. Uh, this has, take advantage of the canals and amenity. Primary focus is improvements to the property, facilities and structures within the corridor. Certainly doing that. Erie Canal and Pittsburgh area is a man-made water source, blah, blah, blah. Essentially, you're satisfying that, in my view. Uh, prohibit direct or indirect discharges. I don't think you're planning to do that. The restaurant's gonna have its own traffic signal and the like. Uh, you'll maintain the property well. Minimize non-point pollution of canal waters, nothing going on there. Gets into marinas and various things. Limit the potential for cumulative and secondary impact of watershed development and other activities on water quality and quantity. You're not affecting that. In this instance, there's no, you know, you're not building your own dock or anything like that that might use additional water, that sort of thing. Uh, moving on to 6. Anybody, any other comments on 5? Okay, uh, 6, protect and restore ecological resources, including fish and wildlife. Really not applicable. Protect locally significant fish and wildlife habitats. You're not doing anything different. That moves us on to Policy 7. Protect and improve air quality in the waterfront area. Oh, and I just do want to back up and say, in Policy 6 and 7, that we respect the work that you had put in previously with regards to the brown paint cleanup and I think it's appropriate for us to mention that publicly again.
Thank you.
Policy 7, protect and improve air quality in the waterfront area. Certainly doing that. Control or abate existing or new, or prevent new air pollution. You've done quite the opposite in the past. Limit discharges of atmospheric radioactive material, capture, recycle fluorocarbons, uh, limit sources of atmospheric disposition, all these are not applicable. Minimize environmental degradation, degradation in the coastal area from solid waste and hazardous substances, nothing there. Manage solid waste to protect public health and control pollution. Certainly you're gonna do that, it's part of site plan. Manage hazardous waste to protect public health and control pollution, defined there. Eight point 3, protect the environment from degradation due to toxic pollutants and hazardous substances. Not applicable. Eight point 4, prevent and remediate discharge of petroleum products. Thank you for your passwork. Eight point 5, transport solid waste. Your comment in our last meeting, you did a lot of that. Uh, site solid and hazardous waste facilities to avoid potential degradation of coastal resources. That's fine. Anybody else have any comment on those? No, just blowing through these pretty quick. Policy 9, provide for public access to and recreational use of canal waters, public lands and public resources of the waterfront area. Right now, there is no sidewalk. You're offering both a sidewalk along the canal front as well in front of the, uh, the restaurant building, as well behind the restaurant building. Uh, and there's additional green space for public use that isn't there today. So really, any development, to a great extent, is providing for something different than what is there today. The extent by which that is done is one of these things that is embedded in the weighing station that we have, you know, as far as relative to other policies. So these are just, I, I mentioned that comment, comment, excuse me. Because I think it's important to think on the degree by which things like Policy 9 are provided can sometimes provide additional weight to bear on concerns on other policies that we may have expressed this evening. So to the extent that what we provided is absolutely better than what is there now, the question may become, to what extent does it overweight the concerns that we may have on other elements of the plan? Um, for, for me personally, that's how I often think of these things. So Policy 9, you know, certainly you're doing a lot. We've talked a lot about it prior to, you know, touching on these things, but I'll just read the policies. And if anybody has any comment, please interject. Promote appropriate physical public access and recreation throughout the coastal area. The town, so this goes to my prior comment, though it's more directly stated, but there isn't actually a policy in place. The town and village shall provide incentives to private development projects which provide public access and/or water-related recreational facilities. So herein is suggesting that there is these incentives, right? Right, these, this is the weighing station. It's not direct with, it's, it's not incentive-based zoning, right? But in a way, it's sort of saying that same sort of thing, right? Uh, Policy 9.2, connect important open space assets. Where new development is created, this is on that open space, where new development is created along the canal, provisions for public access to the canal should be incorporated within the design of the site. Such provisions should allow for pedestrian corridors and other design elements consistent with the linear park nature of the canal corridor. That jumped out at me for two reasons. One, ten parking spots for the public, aside from the restaurant and the residence. I understand we probably don't want to bump into the seventy percent impervious surface coverage that is there now, but with regards to. coverage that is there now, but with regards to the linear park nature of the canal corridor, the question was how much more of that space can be a linear park rather than embedded in the front of the building prior to the roads, at least that's my mind.
I think, just, I think there's more than ten public parking spots.
We just figured out, but again, as you said, they're not going to be labeled private-public, so, you know, there's a mix.
Yep, yep. But I think you would always want to ensure that you have the appropriate parking spots for the residence and the restaurant, which if that's the case, there's ten.
Well, I mean, people might go to work. And so, it's kind of a day-night dichotomy. I think people would want to use the canal during the day, when, so I don't really see scarcity of parking. There's another parking throughout the village, too, people could walk to, to which is.
Yep, yep, good point. And I think the number of cars each unit has in the future hopefully decreases rather than increases. All New Development Projects Shall Incorporate Public Access for Pedestrian and Bicycle Circulation. On that note, I highlighted it to remember. Bicycle circulation along the existing, do you have a bike lane on those roads at this time? Or would it be more you're directing the bicycles to the sidewalk? Or is it just no lane, they're part of the normal traffic?
The last.
The last, so as of now, there's no, there's no bike lane, correct?
Right. But, you know, it's just a loop. Go on the other side.
Yeah. Nine Point Three, Provide Visual Access to Coastal Lands and Waters or Open Spaces Preserved Public Interest in, Provide Access to Recreation Which Is Compatible with Natural Resource, doing that with, okay, so now we're on Policy Ten. Any other comments that people have with regards to Policies up to Nine? Nope? Okay, Policy Ten, Protect Water-Dependent Uses, Promote Siting of New Water Development Uses in Suitable Locations and Support Efficient Canal Operation. I think you're doing that. Docks, sidewalks, none of that's there now. There's a little bit in my mind that thinks about the restaurant and the pool as being a little bit more private than perhaps I'd like for the primary, preeminent, sort of linear park along the canal, that is some concern of mine. So, anyway. Okay, so now we're on to Improve Economic Viability of Water-Dependent Uses, you're doing that. Temple Four, Allow Water-Enhanced Uses Which Complement or Improve the Viability of Water-Dependent Uses, yeah, you're doing that. Okay, now we're on to Eleven. So Policy Eleven is the second of the three that TY Lin said we had to reflect on that was inconsistent previously.
Yeah, well, sorry.
Yep. So Policy Eleven, Promote Sustainable Use of Living Marine Resources, oh wait.
No.
No.
Well, actually, I think that there's, if I may jump in, I think there's a disconnect here between the LWRP law in Chapter One Twenty-One and then the policies, because if you flip back to the law, eleven is enhance the visual quality and protect outstanding scenic resources, and it's inconsistent with the number, numbering of the policy programs.
Policy, okay, so I'm reading from the policy program, so I'm going to skip ahead until we get to that scenic one. So staying on the hundred and fifty page LWRP document, not the law. Policy Eleven was promote sustainable use of living marine resources in the coastal waters.
And that was, that's Section Ten of the law.
Okay.
So we're keeping track here.
Yep, so we're going to skip ahead, not applicable. In the LWRP, Policy Twelve is Protect Agricultural Lands in the Coastal Area, so we're going to skip ahead now. Thirteen is Promote Appropriate Use and Development of Energy and Mineral Resources. And that is it. So now we go to the law.
Yeah, thirteen.
If you could, could you read thirteen?
So thirteen.
No, I'm sorry, eleven.
Eleven in the statute is Enhance Visual Quality and Protect Outstanding Scenic Resources. So the policies are supposed to give guidance to the specifically numbered sections of the law, but somehow it got disconnected.
Yep, there's a disconnect there, so, okay. Well, if you could reread that, maybe, sorry, you had it right here? Okay, here we go, thank you, Susan. So eleven is Enhance Visual Quality and Protect Outstanding Scenic Resources. So let's pause there for discussion. So I think the first thing is, is the project as it's designed, and I would suggest is an anomaly to the village today, nothing like it exists, right? It is absolutely an isolated group of buildings that is uniquely large and different in their designs, that is in stark contrast to the existing structures. They are distinct, there are individual streetscapes. I think there's certainly more cohesive, sort of human scale, the way that you would observe them as you walk along, different than in prior design, so certainly like that, or I do. There is a degree of persistency, Susan, that I think you kind of referenced in the past. We talked a little bit about sort of the visual quality, I do want to, you know, respect that, there's nothing there now, so having something to look at along the canal would be a benefit. I did have some questions about the visual scape from the hillside, from the school, that I think the landscaping plan addresses comfortably for me, but again, it may just be the size and the depth of it that gives me some cause for concern.
So Chris, maybe if you walked from the end of Building Seven, the far end, up the hill, where would that take you?
It's somewhere near the soccer field.
The?
The Pittsburgh-Sutherland football field, somewhere around there.
Okay.
So the, the architectural variety and style is closer than I think ever before to what we would be looking, or at least what I would be looking for from a visual interaction as either a resident, a boater, or a driver. And so again, I just want to commend you on the effort that you put into that. I still do think that there's some persistency to the large and sort of densely packed buildings that creates, that is different than any residential community, or different than any commercial or residential vernacular that exists in the village today. And so in order to, in my mind, sort of permit or suggest that there's consistency here with the LWRP document, I think, again, it's the degree by which the mass and scale create that identity of persistency. And I don't know how, other than mass and scale, to break down that view that I have. It's tough for me, though, because I do frankly like so much of the work that you've put in. I have a little bit, just talking about visual for a second, I have a little concern about the buildings relative to the clubhouse, relative to the carports. There seemed to be a little bit of a separation in style and design, and we talked about the clubhouse, really, you know, the 2014 design of the clubhouse relative to the buildings, is that, in this instance, Susan, to your point, it is atypical, right? It is different, uniquely different, which is actually kind of interesting.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, right? But in that it might, it's the only one, sometimes makes me think, is it the afterthought? And so how much, what else can we do there for, you know, the restaurant, the community, the amenities, and how can we bring that all together in a way that might create a little less of that visual starkness between all the buildings and then the clubhouse and/or the carports?
I like it, I think it looks like more of a boathouse, so I'm, I'm good with it, and it's just the type of variation in shape and, and style and size that I appreciate, I think is.
Great.
Yeah, like, it reminds me of a couple of houses on Sutton Street, Stonework, down Southern, but, yeah, already incorporated.
The, this does go back a little bit to the visual nature of the property being somewhat large in its aesthetic, persistency of the aesthetic, but again, I think you've broken that down, you know, and looking at where we were versus where we are, I think it's much easier for me to think, you know, eleven is more consistent rather than less so. But again, it's that, that visual anomaly relative to size and character, it is uniquely different than any other well-preserved residential area within the village. So as much as we're looking at these other locations along the canal, to Susan's point, I think we have to also think about it specific to Pittsburgh. And I think that mass and the bulk is the crucial element of my view on this policy. If I may, any other questions on visual? Okay. So preserve historic resources of the LWRP area, we already talked about that, that's fine. All Actions Must Conform the Seeker, does that, all actions must adhere to village protective measures for environmental? And that, that's it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, Perform Judging and Disposal of Judged Soil Materials, protective, done that. So let me just reflect back to TY Lin's comments. It is Policy One, Eleven, and Twelve. Those are the ones that were previously considered to be inconsistent. The proposed design no longer competes or detracts, and these are what we had to, okay, I won't read it word for word, but it's basically being, having its own identity versus not, visual interpretation, historic character. I want to go back now, any other comments on those policies that we'd like to talk about? Okay, I want to go back.
Not me, I want to speak further.
The only other thing that I would add is that, as you were going through it, with respect to Twelve, you said that preserving the historic resources of the LWRP area was not a problem for you. And that's, that's fine, that's your determination, I just wanted to let you know that the prior determinations found that the action was inconsistent, so if you're going to make a different determination with respect to that element, you would need to articulate the reason why, you know, what about the project has changed to lead you to a different result?
Okay. With regards to Policy Twelve, I'll just read, preserve historic resources of the LWRP area. Just some notes, the specific waterfront area, I believe this is from the prior LWRP area, adjacent to the proposed project is Erie Canal, recognized by the federal government and Chippewa. The historic resources along the canal and village denote the residential and commercial history of the canal. Wooden structures, both residential and canal, commercial are of varying shape and design, with the exception of the flower mill, consist of only one or two stories. The Village of Pittsburgh has worked over decades to preserve original structures and/or repurpose contemporary uses. The proposed project, this is from prior, however, with its isolated campus of five, three, and four-story brick buildings are of similar design and each larger than almost every other structure in the village, and ignores the Pittsburgh exceptional historical character. In my view, the historical elements of these designs are substantially better in their way of interacting with the existing community, the design elements, and while not congruent with, are reflective of the character of many canal-side properties, be they here or elsewhere. I want to be careful to note that relative to Pittsburgh itself, we've talked a little bit about the Main Street character versus this development, the challenges that we'd have in terms of mimicking Shane Place, it's really not, you know, but.
Right, and so I think Main Street has been preserved. I don't think there is a canal commercial element that we've seen so often in all of these, all of the old photographs that I found, I don't, that's what I don't see. I see a lot of residential and Main Street commercial, but this is a waterfront review, and that, to my mind, means Shane Place and the commercial, based on kind of an agrarian development here, where are those kind of commercial, where are those citations?
It seems from some of those older images that the commercial aspects are actually really large warehouses, huge.
I know, but I think, but that's what we've seen in Lyons and other places, I'm just thinking of Pittsburgh.
So, I mean, we have the flower mill, I suppose, with the library, I mean, I know it's not on the canal, but that's thirty-two thousand square feet or something, it's bigger than any of these.
And by the way, the planning board never got to weigh in on that.
Right.
Just saying.
So one question that I have, with regards to the policies specific in the law, do we need to determine here in the public setting, consistent or inconsistent?
Yes, you need to determine consistent or inconsistent, with respect to each of the policies that are set forth in the law, as interpreted by the program that you went through in detail, and then after weighing and balancing, the consistent versus inconsistent aspects, you determine as a whole whether the project is consistent with the LWRP.
Okay, so we just went through a lot, I think it would make sense to go back one by one and just simply say consistent or inconsistent, have a majority or not. If we don't have a majority, then I'd do that. Right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah?
Katie's voting, Katie's voter.
Katie, you're in?
Sorry, I just lost, basically, you're going through the code?
Yes.
We're going through the code, one through fifteen, we're going to determine consistent or inconsistent, at the conclusion of which, I believe, absent of additional comment from the board, we're prepared to vote on the LWRP consistency review.
And so, this isn't, so three, three items in the past have been found inconsistent.
Right, so it's not, it's not like, it's like seven out of thirteen, and then tips, the issue, you have to weigh, these are considerations, and then you weigh the considerations and see whether, on a whole, the project as proposed is consistent, after considering each of these factors.
So if something could be found inconsistent, and if one is found inconsistent, is everything inconsistent?
It depends on how inconsistent it is.
Or how you weigh it, individually, right?
Yep, good.
So some members of the board may weigh different items differently than others.
Right, so I guess we'll find out at the end.
Yeah, right.
So essentially, you're going to take sixteen votes.
Well.
One through fifteen, and then sixteen, LWRP, no, I'm just trying out.
In this particular instance, I think it's helpful to know whether or not we have unanimity in the consistency or inconsistency, in that there's four of us, it may be that if we determine something to be, that we don't have a determination per se, that doesn't matter with regards to the final vote, but it will matter with regards to the findings, such that rather than having the majority view be written down, maybe the conflicting views will be included in the findings as to why, you know, there was neither a consistency or inconsistency determination. I think that's possible, right?
Let's see where we'll go.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Well, we'll start with number one, well, before I do that, does anybody have? Well, before I do that, does anybody have any challenge or problem if we just simply keep going in the same direction down the road?
No.
Okay. So policy one, foster a pattern of development in the LWRP area that incorporates the design guidelines contained in section five of the LWRP, enhances community character, preserves open space, makes efficient use of infrastructure, makes beneficial use of the waterfront location, and minimizes adverse effects of development, takes advantage of the community's location on the canal to provide amenities for residents and visitors, and guides for future development so that it complements, not competes with, or detracts from the historical character. Susan?
I find it inconsistent.
Inconsistent?
Inconsistent. Consistent.
Policy two.
Well, how about you?
Oh, I said inconsistent.
Oh, okay.
And policy two, protect water-dependent uses, promote sitting of new water-dependent uses in suitable locations, and support efficient harbor operation. Number two, sorry. Water-dependent uses, suitable location, support efficient harbor operation.
Oh, yes, consistent.
Consistent?
Consistent, sorry.
It's good. I'm stealing your...
Yes, right.
Right.
That's all right.
That's good. Number three, protect...
Did you say consistent?
Consistent, yep. So that's going to be consistent. And I think in the final findings, we're not going to... As long as there's a majority, we're not going to reflect on, you know, the difference. Three, protect existing agricultural lands within the LWRP area, not applicable. Promotes sustainable uses of living marine resources in coastal waters, not applicable. Protect and restore ecological resources, including significant fish and wildlife habitats, wetlands, and rare ecological communities, not applicable. Protect and improve water resources.
Consistent.
Consistent.
Consistent, consistent.
Minimize loss of life, structures, and natural resources from flooding and erosion. Consistent? To the extent that it applies, consistent?
Consistent, consistent.
Protect and improve air quality in the LWRP area. Consistent?
Okay, yes.
Right, yes.
Or not.
Minimize environmental degradation in the LWRP area from solid waste and hazardous substances. Consistent?
Wait, ask everybody.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, please. Absolutely. Thank you, Susan. Getting ahead of myself. Provide for public access to and recreational use of coastal waters, public lands, and public resources of the LWRP area.
Consistent.
Consistent?
Consistent, consistent.
Enhance visual quality and protect outstanding scenic resources.
Find it inconsistent.
Numbers is 11 out of 11.
Inconsistent.
We get one more tag?
Yeah. Enhance visual quality and protect outstanding scenic resources.
Inconsistent. Consistent.
12, preserve historic resources of the LWRP area.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent. Consistent.
All actions must conform to seeker. They do. All actions must adhere to village protective measures for environmental resource preservation. There's a guidebook for the green print Pittsburgh feature. I believe they do.
You previously found... Pittsburgh previously found that action was not applicable.
Not applicable, okay, thank you. Perform judging and disposal of dredged soil in a manner which is protective of natural resources. Not applicable. All right. So just a note to the applicant. Inasmuch as we all had different determinations of consistency and inconsistency, recognize that it doesn't offer you any understanding of shades of gray or how we arrive at that. We may be remarkably close in many respects to that statement or that determination. So I just want to express that because we're about to put forward the final vote. And I just wanted to ensure that you knew that this is tough for all of us.
Yeah, well, tough is for me.
Yeah.
And, you know, sitting here, I would ask you for the overall, go back to what you said and weigh it. Weigh everything. Weigh the 15 years that I've been working on this.
If I may, we respect your prior comments with regards to these matters, for sure, and the efforts that you've put in previous.
And so when you make your final vote, what my suggestion would be to you is to vote to approve the LWRP as a whole and weigh all the positives that we have done that may overtake some of the negatives. Because at the end of the day, I'm not going away. I'm going to come back. If it's a no vote, you know, my next option is to sue the village, and we're going to get into that. And to be honest, you know, the HPB, you know, what my suggestion would be to you, if you think this is inconsistent or something, is the overall to keep moving and make some suggestions to the HPB to make this better so that when we go back and do the final design, it does incorporate some of the things you want. A no vote doesn't get us any farther.
If I just maybe jump in for a second? I mean, if this board hasn't voted yet, so maybe I should wait to make this comment. But, you know, the threat of litigation at this point...
It's not a threat. It's just... It's not a threat.
It's premature.
It's not a threat. It's just... It's a fact of what will happen next.
No, what will happen next is that you have the right to an administrative appeal under 121.5H, like you did last time.
Okay.
And let me... And let me simply say as well that in the findings, there'll be specific suggestions and remedies that will be identified as to how should it be determined to be inconsistent, to amend the application or adjust the application such that it is consistent. So there are remedies and appropriate remedies that in the LWRP that would be identified in findings.
Yeah, again, my suggestion, again, is we can do this in the affirmative or the negative. If we really want to get this done, which is what we're trying to say, I thought that's what you said. I thought you said we've done a good job. I thought you said the progress has come a long way. Then let's do it in the affirmative. Save everyone a lot of time and save the village a lot of money, and we can do this the easy way. Well, we're doing what you gotta do. Do what you gotta do. We'll do it the hard way, and we'll go at it.
I don't think any further debates really...
Yeah, I concur.
Why don't you just go ahead?
Yeah. So if roll call, do you have a random ordering of things or however you want to do it?
And the question is, is the project consistent or inconsistent with the LWRP?
All right. As stated.
Okay, roll call. Member Hapton?
Consistent.
Member Shannon?
Inconsistent.
Member Loda?
Inconsistent.
Chair Marshall?
Inconsistent.
Motion denied.
So I... So point boarder, would it be possible to skip the... To continue to work? You've heard some of our comments over the months, Chris, over the years. Would it be possible to keep working and rehear the LWRP?
That's up to the applicant.
Chris, may I suggest we talk about that with your brother tomorrow?
No, no, no. My answer is no. Absolutely not. We're going to take alternative action at this point, and we're going to keep looking, and you'll see me again. I appreciate the time on this. I'm extraordinarily disappointed. This has gone on and on. It's too bad we're going to go this way. That's the way we're going.
Yeah. I sincerely appreciate all of the work that you've put into this. And insofar as the policies were determined inconsistent relative to as they were last time, again, it does not express the proximity or to a consistency determination. And again, utmost respect.
So you're saying we're closer?
Oh, heck, yeah. Oh, heck, yeah.
So, okay.
Sorry, like, yes, right? Definitive, in my mind, definitive yes.
But you couldn't... But you still don't think that, you know, weighing it...
Yeah, thank you so much.
Enough debate.
Wait, motion to close the meeting this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.